Okay, it's six thirty-two. We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Court, if you will take your call.
Mr. Fox? Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson present? Mr. Reckley present? Ms. Saibacher here? Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Mr. West? There's seven council members present and one absent.
Thank you. And if you would all join us, Pastor Williamson is here to do our invocation.
Let us pray together. Our heavenly Father in the season set aside for us in America especially to pause and reflect and remember how blessed we are as a people. I acknowledge this in light of all the difficulties we face as a nation with sickness and violence and many of the other issues that challenge a free people in a free nation. We are still most blessed, Lord, even with all that challenges us. We want to give you our thanks and praise tonight for the country that we live in, for the freedoms that we cherish, and for our men and women in uniform who defend our Constitution and flag with their lives, for our men and women in uniform who protect our communities and keep us all in relative safety, for those who patrol the halls of our schools to maintain a learning presence for our children, and so many, many ways we are deeply in debt to you, dear Lord. Tonight for those that serve the city, our administrators, all of our department heads, our public safety officers, and the folks on the streets every day helping us to move forward as one community, for those we give you thanks. For our mayor and council persons and those that serve on commissions and boards that collectively move us forward together, we thank you, God, for their commitment to our town and community. We pray for this session tonight. We ask your blessings on all that are discussed and any decisions we pray that are made, they will be pleasing, Lord, to you. I'm always happy and I want to proclaim it. When the community comes to session to participate, that makes government what it should be for the people. And I'm thankful for our community that's here even this night to participate, for our city family who needs a touch, for those who need encouraged, for those that are bereaved, and for those that are facing the daily trials of affliction, please continue to offer them grace, comfort, and peace. Guide us all through this season and help us through your love to encourage each other. We pray this together through Christ our Lord. Amen. Face the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Praise it, sir. To you.
Okay, first up tonight, we have a sad occasion to celebrate, but it's also a happy one. Our longtime CFO Kathy Hochslag is going to be retiring, so we're going to recognize her with a proclamation. Come down and present that. Whereas on the occasion of the retirement of Kathy Hochslag from the City of Fulton after seventeen years, eleven months, and sixteen days improper, the city reported expression of its grateful appreciation for her medical service as an employee of the City of Fulton. And whereas Kathy's career began with the city on December seventeen, two thousand and four as the county supervisor, and whereas throughout her more than seventeen years of service at Fulton, Kathy received the government, office, association, and the city in two thousand and six, when she became the city of Fulton. And whereas Kathy's knowledge, dedication, and years of trusted experience will certainly be marked across the city of Fulton. And now therefore, I am mayor of the city of Fulton, and on behalf of the city council and citizens of our community, extend our sincere and grateful appreciation for the many years of work served for this community. We wish to convey our heartfelt congratulations and congratulations to Kathy for the much success and happiness in her career. And with this prayer out, I can do set my hand and cross your face. Mr. Hochschild and City of Fulton Bridge. When I think of Kathy and her career, I think of attention to detail. She always has her i's dotted and her t's crossed, and she had that expectation for everybody that works around her, so we appreciate that. We'll miss you, but I wish you well. First up, or next up, we have comments from visitors. Those wishing to address the council, if you would come to the podium, give us your name and address and leave your comments to five minutes or less, please.
Hello. My name is Carolyn Williams. I reside at three forty-eighth Pioneer Drive in Fulton, Missouri. And I have a few concerns. Okay. My one main concern is about the homeless. You know, it's difficult because I have been in that position before. Not all homeless people are on drugs. Some are just down on their blood. But I think that we could start doing a little bit more for them. Okay, I've been there. I've been on drugs, everything. I went to prison, but I have fourteen years clean and sober in January. I graduated as an alcohol and drug treatment specialist. And then I did volunteer work for four years out at the state hospital and worked with the sexual offenders. But, you know, we have the two little houses up on Jefferson, which is good, you know. But I think we need to try to start doing a little bit more. You know, when I first moved into housing, you know, I'd been cleaning stuff, and it was just like, you know, I used to always feed the homeless because I hated seeing them hungry. And they would come to my house, I would let them take a shower, I would do everything because I just, I don't like it. And then they got to where they said they couldn't come on housing no more. So then I started taking the food over to the park, the little park right down West Madison. Then they got where they were arresting some of the homeless people for being in the park. I never thought you could be barred from being in a public park, but it was. So I still feed them, you know. I take the food to wherever they are. But I mean, there are, I feel like there's billions here in Fulton that we could try to do a little bit more to housing, like Columbia got the big housing for the homeless. And I'd be willing to help in any way because I know what it feels like, you know. And I just want to, you know, we don't have no place for them to eat no more, nothing. You know, it's just, you know, it's just hard. Since I've been there, you know, I was one of the bad characters. Yes, Bob Sterling, Chief Myers, you know. But like I said, I've tried to, you know, change my life. I've been a foster grandparent for four years. Never thought I could do that, but I have been. And I just want to know, what can we do for the homeless? You know, and also I just had COVID for the third time, and we had to call the ambulance. Now, I see we have a new courthouse, a new jail. We don't even have a hospital. We don't even have urgent care or nothing. And I just, I don't know. I'd be willing to do whatever to help in this community because, you know, I done lived two different lives. And I just wanted to know, what is it that we can do, you know, to help? I'd be willing to put in time, everything. It doesn't matter. I just, you know, I'm just kind of tired to see, you know, the homeless and stuff. And the two houses up there, there's just not enough room for all of them. And I know some of them are on drugs and they want to be, and you can't help the ones that don't want to get help. It took me a little bit to get that in my head. But, you know, when it got down to it, I asked, I begged for help. And I just wanted to know, what can we do? Is there something we can do like to give them a place where if they need something to eat, you know? I still try to feed them, but I go like up on the street or whatever, and I take the food to them. You know, I just, I don't, I don't, never want to see no one go hungry, you know. And like I said, I've been there, and I lived a rough life for a minute. But now I'm trying to do something different. And I just want to know, is there any suggestions, anything, what we can do for these people? I know we can't help them all, but some of them don't want help, you know. But think about the ones that do want help. And they cry out for it, but we have no resources to do to help them with.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you're at your five-minute mark.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your comments, Ms. Williams. We don't respond to your comments from visitors, but we do take those to heart for sure. So thank you for coming up. All righty, anyone else wishing to address the council?
The chamber isn't officially on the agenda, but do you want us to comment now or wait until we get to that line item?
So we do have a resolution that we, you're welcome if you have a comment, you want to do the five-minute comment now, you can do that.
Okay.
But we also have a resolution later on, so if you want to speak and Mayor Cannon allows that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so closer to the time.
I think so, that'd be appropriate. We'll give you time. All right, no, anyone else? Okay, we'll wrap that portion up, and I've been reminded to introduce our new city clerk. I apologize, Kathy Ratliff has been on board with us now for, what, a week? A week, yeah. So she's been hitting the ground running, tons of experience, and welcome aboard, and we're glad to have you. And thank you. Okay, so next up, we have our council consent agenda, and tonight we have several items. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. Tonight we have the approval of the city council meeting minutes of September twenty-seventh, meeting minutes of October twenty-fifth, meeting minutes of November eighth as well. We have the approval of the director of administration report for October twenty-twenty-two. We have the approval letter of support for Missouri Girlstown Foundation and a letter of support also for Missouri Women's Business Center. And I would just say that with the ARPA funds, I apologize, we're getting a lot of these consent letters. That's the reason why they're going for grant monies, and those letters are required for that grant submission, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to remove the director of administration report off. I have a few things I'd like to ask questions.
Okay, you can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda minus item D, the director of administration report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. And yeah, we'll dig into the DOA report. Councilman West?
Okay, I hope there, there may be some others have similar questions. On page eleven, under wastewater, at the very end, I'm not sure, probably some of this is technical terms that I'm not familiar with, but it says upset due to taking down the inner ditch and then temperature dropped as well. I will be reporting a violation due to the monthly average being above thirty milligrams per liter. It is slowly coming back in line, and you know, it was a thirty-five point three for the month, apparently. So where do we stand with that and what ramifications might there be from that? Will there be a fine from DNR or?
Mr. Dunlap, please come to the podium.
Thank you.
Yeah, basically what happened is there's two ditches out there, and one of the ditches, the aeration system messed up in, it developed a leak in the bottom. And to fix that, we had to drain that inner ditch. And while the wastewater operators tried to get everything worked through and drop those suspended solids prior to, it did get high due to us taking half the ditch out service.
Okay.
And it has been reported to DNR, and we have not heard back from you, but normally if there's a reason like that, there's some legacy.
So how long does it usually take to receive, hear back from them or?
Usually a month.
Okay. So right now, we don't know, but we don't think it'll be an issue. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Dunlap, all those up there? Okay. My next one's on the next page, under engineering. Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. On page twelve, under engineering, traffic signal rapid flashing beacons. Grant will pay one hundred seventy-five, nine sixty-one, sixty. City must commit at least ninety-eight, nine seventy-eight, forty. That's quite a bit.
What was the resolution we did? We finished that up, what, about a month ago? Month or two ago?
Yeah, last month or so.
Kyle Grummer, city engineer. Yes, Mike. That is a resolution we did a little while back. This project, it will not happen next year, it'll be a twenty-twenty-four project, so we'll have a little bit to figure out the funding on that, but so.
Okay, so it's not, we won't lose access to the grant funds by delay?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And then my third one's on page sixteen. And just a little bit of recognition, this is under police department. Last statement here is Officer Lauks, I may not be pronouncing that correctly, administered liceevate to a five-day-old infant that was not breathing. So first of all, commendation to that officer. Any remarks you'd like to make?
Bill Ebick, chief of police. Officer Lauks responded to a five-day-old that was not breathing at Faith Maternity Care. And before anyone else could arrive, he was able to assist the child with some back thrust and taking, I don't know what they're called, the little like gauze stopper things, suction, yeah, suction.
Yeah.
And helped clear the child's airway and began crying before others could show up. But he did a tremendous job, and he will be recognized for that.
Thank you so much. I mean, I know our police, our fire do this sort of thing every day, but it's really heartwarming to see something like that, and I'd really like you sharing more of the details with us, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pass our things on.
Also, while you're up there, hats off to Canine Officer Bo on the suspect that was apprehended on the jewelry robbery.
Yeah, the suspect from the jewelry store and burglary at Sunshine Laundry, even with the snow on the ground. Bo knows, he has a great, great nose. And even through the snow, he was able to take everybody right to where the person was. So that's awesome.
That's pretty awesome.
And there was a substantial amount of property that was taken from the jewelry store also recovered from that, so it was a good deal.
And it looks like he may be busy with some of these other things, you know, I see some warrants for methamphetamines and something like, and assisting with some searches and things, so.
Correct. He's being put to work, and he's doing a great job.
Super. Great to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Nelson, for bringing that up. That's all I had. I don't know if anybody else has anything.
I would just like to say I appreciate the patrol report being broken out. That's pretty handy to kind of see the separation between sort of the administrative side and the patrol side, so.
Motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other questions on the DOA report? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Okay, next up, we have our presentation and acceptance of the October financial statement. We've all had a chance to look it over. Kathy, if you would give us the highlights.
Okay. We've now recorded nine months of sales tax and collections are up five point three percent. So we're still almost three and a half percent behind the rate of inflation. Use tax, revenues are up eleven percent, so we're a little ahead on that. The airport purchased a load of avgas in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Electric and gas are in the hole, in the red. Month-to-date, year-to-date, water, sewer, and solid waste are all in the black. And I'd answer any questions anybody has.
Is your last support question?
So we don't accept this report if she had to stay? Move her acceptance.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Thank you. We do not have unfinished business tonight. New business, we have a representative here to request permission for a lighted cruise. I believe Mr. Jody Hatchell is here.
Thank you for having me, everyone. This would be our second annual lighted cruise. It's kind of come from the VFW, so we've gotten to a committee together. The path that we would like is from Memorial Field or Memorial Parking Lot up Nichols. Is that west on Ninth by Debo's Funeral Home and then down Court Street to the VFW. This will involve vehicles that are lighted with Christmas lights or a themed car or something of that nature. So, yeah, that's kind of it. And then a lot of those vehicles that are in the Friday lighted cruise, Callaway Cruise, will be in the Saturday parade also.
And this is something that was started last year kind of at sort of last minute, but it's.
Minute, right, right, yeah.
It was popular, I know that.
Yeah, it was just kind of thrown together last year. We've shortened the parade route considerably this year. Last year, we wanted to involve the nursing homes, but really by seven o'clock, most of those folks are, you know, in bed. So we went all the way out to like Presbyterian or Manor and out to the senior citizen center. So we've shortened that parade route, you know. You learn by, you know, your mistakes, so. It was very well attended last year, and I think now having a more concise location will get even more people downtown, so, yeah.
Very good. Any questions for Jody?
Is this open to any vehicle or does that have to be a Vinti's?
Nope. You just, if you want to be in the parade, Mike, you just have your car lit up, six forty-five at Memorial Parking Lot, or five forty-five. Five forty-five, so. And this is Kenny Albert, he's also on the committee, so.
One of the things that we had last year that we deeply appreciated, that we did have the police, the chief of police had a car there for, to start the parade. And we also had a fire truck at the end of the parade. And if we could get that again, that would be great. If we can't, we can do without, but it was so well-attended by the public, even out on Wood Street and through the park and everything. It was just a great experience, and we thought, good again, we just had to do it again. So that's what we're really aiming for, and we're trying to get it more concentrated on people, and that, and that shortening the route up is going to do that for us. We had over twenty-seven cars in it last year. We're hoping to have more than that this year because of people talking and everything else, so. We're hoping that it goes very well. It's going to be a slow deal, and we just.
We're going to obey all the traffic lights and stop signs and all of that, because this is not a parade. This is a cruise, so.
We won't let any screens block or anything like that.
I'm seeing some nods of heads back behind from our fire chief, I don't know about the police chief, definitely support. Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Very good. We'll get the word out and hopefully just make this bigger and better.
That's what we're hoping, because it was really great, and most of those people, like Jody said, did attend the Saturday parade.
And even some of us attend the Bloomfield Parade, so, you know, once you put all that money in your vehicle and want it lit up and, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to kind of show it off.
It'll promote both events, so.
Exactly.
Also on that same token, we did have floats and some other vehicles out, I think we even had a tractor. So it's more of a.
I'm pretty sure that a lot of the floats that you would see on a Saturday morning would look beautiful at night.
So. Any other questions, concerns?
I would entertain a motion.
And for next year, I've talked to Courtney too, a little bit. We'll get this on the calendar a lot sooner. This was kind of dropped in our lap.
It's okay.
There you go. So for next year, we've talked, and we'll get this on the calendar so we can get it on there.
Appreciate that, yeah.
You'll probably get more participation that way, too.
I will say as well, it's Kathy's show now. It's in good hands, so Kathy's your go-to.
Okay.
Yeah, that's going to take some getting used to.
Well, I have her email, so. Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen, yes.
Thank you.
Which organization, do you have these promoted on Facebook or?
We do have a, Jenny Albert has, she just put a post out today. There's a few folks that have some posts out that we're kind of sharing. It's not really any group, just, it just happened.
It was supposed to be just a Jeep lighted parade. It's how it all started. A bunch of us always get together and do some Jeep rides. And so somebody said, well, let's do a light one. And so it did, and it turned out that a tractor and floats and everything else. And so it's just been over there. So that's what we want to do.
Somebody may actually have to be, put a page up and do something bigger next year, so be prepared.
Yeah, we're ready for it. We'll be ready. This year, we thought somebody, we thought somebody was going to shorten it.
That happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good. Next up, Patrick Bono is here to discuss Mirma grant awards for this year.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Patrick Bono. I'm the loss control director for Mirma, which is the Missouri Intergovernmental Risk Management Association. And for Councilman Luther, there's going to be a quiz later as to what that stood for. Fulton has been a member of our association for over twenty years, and you were actually a founding member of Mirma back in nineteen eighty-one when seven or eight towns got together and created a loss control and insurance organization. We do your risk management, your insurance, liability, work comp, basically everything that you need in terms of insurance minus health. Although we do that now, I hear that your health self-insurance is maybe better than ours, so good job on that. Our association had a grant committee that met middle of September, and it appears that some of your staff members have applied for grant items. And these items are typically high liability items, or items that help lower your workers' compensation mod, which is your experience, or the number of claims that you have. And over the course of time, the grant program that's been created by the membership hopes to lower the cost to member cities. Our association works directly with municipalities, you know, we don't have counties or schools. We stay pretty well focused on the task at hand. And if I get my handy-dandy glasses, which are a new thing in my life, I can tell you what the city is receiving. Typically, I come with a certificate. Tonight's a little more important. I actually have a check. So we were a little advanced in our paperwork processing this year, so we actually, I'm bringing some money, which covers a grant item as well as a parks and rec item that I'll talk about in a second. In general, though, there are four different items, two of which are fairly similar, a couple of air monitors for fire and for gas. A part of the grant that's already been paid via this check is beacons or vehicle warning lights. It looks like we have eleven different sets for $829. Overall, the biggest item is a dash camera for the police department, and that would total $3,375. For a grand total of all these items, it's $6,784.22. Let's see here. Part of this check, I have a check tonight for $19.29.22. $1,100 of this check stems from the fact that we also reimburse the city on aquatic audit reimbursement. So anytime the City of Fulton successfully passes an audit through a lifeguard management program, we will actually pay for those audits. They are fairly expensive, so anytime that agency comes in and videotapes your lifeguards on stand, it's about $1,100. And if you guys pass those audits, if the lifeguards are paying attention, and they can prove their skills through testing, then we will pay for the full cost of that audit. And that has been a very beneficial thing. There are a couple of different programs that we reimburse for, both Starfish, as well as Ellis and Associates. Red Cross right now, they have a quasi-audit program. Our issue with Red Cross is if a guard is deficient in their audit, they don't necessarily pull that lifeguard license. So we want to see that license pulled until remediation can occur, and luckily, the other two programs actually do that, thus making the citizens and patrons of your pool, in our eyes, more safe. But I would be glad to take any questions, if you have any, and I'm glad to present the check to whomever will take it.
I'll come down and we'll get a picture of it. I'm not going to catch it myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Well, I won't lose this.
Never lose it.
And I would say, congrats is in order to Clay and your staff for being on the ball, and we do have a good lifeguard system out there. Even though that's a tough job and it's probably not always perfect, they passed that test that day, and by golly, that's important, so we appreciate that. Okay. Next up, we have resolutions. Oh, nope, I'm missing our council concerns. Sorry, guys. Council concerns, council member may discuss matters or concerns not on the agenda. Council liaisons to city boards and commissions will also provide a brief review of the most recent meeting. And I'll start to my left, Councilwoman West.
Okay, I, we have not had a planning and zoning commission meeting since our last meeting. I'm not sure when we have one coming up. I haven't seen any notification. So maybe things have settled down for a little while. I really have nothing to note other than to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels, and hopefully we'll have this weather stay with us for a few days. Everybody that's out there frying turkeys and enjoy the weather.
Yeah, a lot of traveling coming up.
That's right. So be careful out there.
Alright, Councilwoman Sibokor.
We have not had a park board meeting, and I have no concerns.
Okay, Councilwoman Recl?
Yes, we have not had a topic meeting since the last meeting. But I would like to thank Jeremy and his buddies for coming out there at Pennison, and we had areas, we cleaned up with a lot of trash and a lot of bushes and things, and I just want to thank them. Thank them for the wonderful job.
Awesome.
And I'm the same thing, I just want to say Merry Thanksgiving.
Merry Thanksgiving.
Merry Thanksgiving, yes, and everyone stay safe on the road. And, oh, since we're on the traffic thing, yeah. Be careful out there. The weather's going to change, it's going to go from rain to whatever, so just be careful.
Yep. Yep, thank you, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Stenner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The historic preservation commission meeting that was scheduled was canceled, and we will meet again in December. And then just a concern after, I brought up the concerns about the retaining wall at Ravine and Second Street. I've had more citizens, not just from my ward, but from around town, that travel that road, that just wanted to add, again, additional concerns about that retaining wall and the reduced visibility of Second Street. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So there has been no airport advisory board meeting since our last council meeting. We do have one scheduled in December. There were a few minor updates supplied in the monthly DOA report. As far as concerns with Ms. Williams, I do share her concern, as well as other council members. We have brought that up in council meetings before. I do suggest we get that into a work session or some other avenue to further investigate some of the solutions that the city may have to help support the issue.
Very good, yeah, we can put that on our list for a work session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've heard that the soup kitchen is opening again, or in some form.
I hadn't heard that.
I don't know where and where, but.
Yeah.
So that'll help a little bit, but.
Yeah, Pastor White, from the Presbyterian Church, is working towards, I think he's the leader on that, but.
So that's Sue Beatty.
Pardon?
Sue Beatty is the chair, current chair of that.
Oh, she is now, okay.
She's only a committee.
Last I heard, it was Erin, but.
He's involved.
Yeah, he kind of facilitated getting everyone together, but then they did nominate a board and elect a board.
Right.
We're calling it open table, and it's going to be at my office, the community center. They are finalizing some paperwork with the state before their formal decree and all of that, so it's coming.
That takes time, yeah. There is a soup kitchen, Holt Summit, but that's not here. So it's great to hear that's still moving forward.
And that's one little piece.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Washington? Alrighty, and Councilwoman Nelson?
Um, yes, I did have somebody approaching about behind Bartley. There's the walking trail back there, a cross bridge that goes over a creek. Is Kyle here? He was concerned that there's, the creek is washing out onto his property, and he has asked if some rock could possibly be put in the creek there to help that from washing, like over at that low water, and then you go right around, the dog park is right up there. I'm sorry, I'm terrible with street names.
Are you talking about McIntyre?
McIntyre, yes.
You're right, by McIntyre.
Whoa, you had me in the whole wrong area.
Okay, and he said that it's really, really starting to wash out on that bank, right, right over the bridge where you cross.
I think it's Brookside is the road.
Okay, thank you. I'm landmarks, not street names.
Yeah, you had me at the wrong school.
Yeah, I know, I did, I'm sorry.
Great, we got there.
So he was concerned about that, and just wanted to see if maybe we could put something there to help with that situation. And then we did have a utility board meeting, and Daryl, I'm going to call on you. I can't, I can't give any more bad news, I'm going to let him do it.
Chicken?
What's that?
Are you chicken?
No, not at all. It's just, it's been a couple weeks, and I don't want to get the numbers wrong, so I didn't, I don't have my paper in front of me.
I don't blame you, that's a lot. Daryl, please.
Daryl Dunlap, utilities. Main topic of discussion was utility rates again, and this time we did look at electric rates. And we looked at raising the base fee or the meter fee on residential from thirteen to sixteen dollars, and then going to a flat ten cents on all the consumption, where right now, there's a, it's a floating rate. The first five hundred kilowatts is nine point two cents, and then it goes to ten cents. Going to ten cents in that way, reflecting how we do all of the rates, the gas rates are a flat rate. And then on commercial single phase, going from fifteen to eighteen dollars on those meter fees per month. And I believe there was one person adjutant at the meeting, but it was unanimously voted yes to take that to the council.
When will we expect that ordinance?
When was the last time rates were changed?
One question at a time, guys, please.
When would we expect that ordinance to come to us for review?
We'll work with Renee on that, it'll probably be in December or January. The rates was raised, there was a dollar increase per year that was put in, I think when Leroy was mayor. I think next year is going to be its last dollar rate, so it's going to have a dollar increase anyway. And this was to take that ordinance away and replace it with this one. To give you some ideas, we did a comparison, and right now, twelve hundred kilowatt hours is a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. If you go to Ameren's summer rates, it's one sixty-five, Ameren's winter is one oh-two, Three Rivers Co-op's one thirty-four, Columbia's summer is one forty-nine, Columbia's winter is one thirty-nine, Carthage's Missouri is one thirty-seven, Jackson's one thirty-four. And with this rate increase, we would be at one thirty-six, so we're still with Carthage and Jackson cheaper than others. So that's, that was the comparison.
Where does the utility board think this will put us in terms of the budget and breaking even and paying for the utility? I'm more concerned about that math rather than where we fit with comparison to someone else.
Well, Kathy ran some rough numbers before she retired. And she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking around three hundred thousand, three ninety.
I'm thinking three sixty, so we're all in there.
Now, that's assuming everybody uses, you know, at least five hundred. We do have some signs out there, you know, just signs, that probably don't use five hundred. We threw them in as everybody used at least five hundred, with that assumption.
Is that a rate, is that amount per month? Three hundred and sixty thousand per month?
No.
Year?
That's for the year.
Annual. How many are we losing?
I believe this year, by her financial statement, we lost almost a million.
So we're not raising it enough?
Not bad.
We haven't looked at the rest of the commercial and the industrial yet. We've taken this body at times. I'm trying to eat the whole, instead of trying to eat the whole hog, we've kind of broken it up to make it where it'd be easier for everybody to.
Mr. Stone, you finish, I.
I appreciate that, but it added another thought. I guess I would appreciate having the commercial and the manufacturing rates reviewed prior to the residential rates. And that, personally, I would rather we receive something from the utility board about those rates, the commercial rates, before we receive something for residential, to see just how much we need to hit the residential.
I would say the residential don't get you there. But if you look at the number of customers, you got about forty-six hundred residential customers, and you got a couple hundred, you know, industrial, large commercial customers. So you've got to hit the residential.
No, I'm not saying we won't, but I.
And it don't.
Personal preference is to review the commercial before we review the residential.
Understand.
Who was next over there before I go?
Uh, Councilman Luther, go ahead. Oh, okay.
Okay. So I think I know why, but I'd like you to explain to the audience and, you know, our citizens, why we're having this issue.
Okay, if you look back over the last several years, our cost of power all in, it was like fifty-six dollars. I've got the exact number, it's not going to share them with you.
Sure.
But over the last several years, it's been going up, and over the last twelve months, it was sixty-five dollars per megawatt hour transmission and everything, all, you know, delivered product.
Right.
So it's the purchase power that's driving it. I hate to say it could be worse, but it could have been. Prairie State's this year actually turned it, we made money off Prairie State's. On Kathy's line, it's shown as a negative. So that coal plant in Illinois has helped a lot. The coal shortage into Sykesville, where they've only got to run one train, hurt. So hopefully that coal crisis is going to be over as far as the delivery. So we won't lose as much next year to the Sykesville. I mean, Sykesville stayed up, don't get me wrong, but we was getting about nine megawatts from instead of eleven every hour. So it was purchase power.
Having to purchase it on the open market, especially during peak times, is expensive. And I know we need to run our own generation a little bit, not much, but I think we have.
And if you look back in the spring, there was a lot of hydro, we had a lot of floodwaters, not flood, but high waters on the dams, and that helped also. So I'm not saying it's not bad, it is bad, but it could have been worse without the spring rains and Prairie State staying online.
And that's the same thing we're seeing with gas, right, our natural gas. It's what, it's costing us more money to purchase it, to pass it on to our customers, in both cases.
Next month, gas spot price is over six bucks. A few weeks ago, when we was having those warm November days, spot November gas was above fours. So gas is still very dynamic.
Yeah. If we have another issue like we had. Is that twenty-one?
Don't go there.
Yeah, don't go there.
Actually, one other question. If we have the three diesels out there at the power plant that are currently not EPA qualified, if we, I've looked at that, I know you and I have talked, and others have talked, is the investment worth it to make those qualified so we'd have to purchase less power, I guess?
We're trying to get some prices on making those non-rice units, which basically means they can just only run a diversity, and put some catalytic converters on those. But I'm talking to Carthage, which already did that with some semerary installers, they also had a chance to control systems out. So we're trying to get some prices to what it would be to at least break one of those back.
And I tell you, those utility board meetings are very interesting, and y'all are more than welcome to attend those. If you can get away from work sometime, you'll get a lot more into the weeds. There's tons that they talk about that we can't get into all those details, but it'll shed a light on a lot of things.
I just want our citizens to know what's going on, so, in the interest of transparency, that's before I ask back.
Very good.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next up, resolutions. Councilman Washington, if you would present resolution thirty-four sixty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution thirty-four sixty-nine, a revolution of the lives of the mayor and the city clerk on behalf of the city of the reserve to enter into an agreement that allows the change of conduct of the reserve, so circuits can be rendered in 2023 and establish an effective date. I make the motion to approve, uh, the resolution thirty-four sixty-nine on tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and this is a contract we do every other year, is that right?
Every year.
Every year. The, okay, yeah, we, yeah. And we've got some representatives here from the chamber. Whoever wants to speak, Beth?
Kim's going to have to come in for numbers. She's got a memory for numbers better than me.
She's got a memory for numbers better than me. First of all, the, the way that I read this, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this resolution. This means that the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the city can enter into an agreement. We need to update that agreement, because, well, first of all, I watched the meeting last week, or I guess Monday, it's been a long week, Monday of last week?
Yeah, it was a little weird.
It's holiday time, we're shipping a lot of stuff, it's a little nuts. We watched the meeting, and I just wanted to say personally that I really appreciated your thoughtful conversation about it. We, as a board, understand where you're coming from, you're, we understand the position you're in. We're not here to fight about that, I mean, not that we're not disappointed that we're not getting the full seventy-eight thousand, but I just want to make sure you guys know that we're, we're appreciative of what we are getting. And also just to remember, it's not, you know, we're not viewing this as a charity, we're viewing it as, we have a contract for services that we work with you guys on executing. So, we have been working on an updated version of that contract, and we'll share that with you electronically, and then if the mayor and city clerk can sign it, then that's fine, right? Okay.
I'm gonna defer over here.
I mean, that's what the resolution says, so, that, that works for us, that works for you guys. Does anybody have any questions from last week? There's, I heard a few comments, some of the conversation that I heard was about, specifically about contributions from other municipalities, and Kim's got numbers on that, but I just wanted you to know that we talked about that last year, and we did go and work on that a lot, and the county is contributing a significant amount, almost equal to what the city is contributing. So, we did listen and have been working on that, and we're doing what we can for all that. We have a contract for services with you guys and with the city, or with the county, so, like, assigned to the thing that is very similar, so. Is there any other questions you guys have for us?
So, the city and the county, if you had to put a percentage wise as to where your resources, your businesses end up, and I guess the county includes us, obviously, but where are most of your services, your success stories?
Oh, okay. Um, well, think about where the population is, okay? Out of the county's forty-five thousand population, the city is a substantial portion of that. Much of the economic activity for the county occurs inside or around Fulton, and so many of the success stories are related to the footprint of Fulton, but there are others. Because we are a countywide economic representative, we are an economic development council, we do work across the entire county. And we also then recognize that the city of Fulton benefits from that additional economic activity that occurs elsewhere. Where one of us succeeds, we all succeed. And so we don't carve off and focus on one over the other, over the other, we focus on the whole, and where we can best be opportunistic, successful, where we can best put the effort to work. I thought you were gonna ask the question about the financials of the, of the chamber, and where, what proportion comes from what activities? And I really like that you asked the question about results first, rather than financials, because to me, that's forward thinking. Focusing on what we accomplish, what we do together, because the chamber doesn't do it alone, we do it with partners, we do it with the city of Fulton as a partner, the county as a partner, and other entities like Callaway Electric, and private municipal. All that partnership works, and we are seeing benefit, we're seeing success, we're seeing things happen that weren't happening five to seven years ago. The revitalization of the chamber and focusing on a specific strategic plan that is highly focused on economic development is showing results. And we, and we see it in our community, we see it in our small shops, we see it in our large manufacturing, we see it all in between. And yet we all know that nothing works if the whole doesn't work. Housing, workforce development, business startups, retaining and making existing businesses successful, we have to do all those things. And we don't do them alone, we do them together. But the chamber is acting as the spearhead for those activities, and we're getting the feedback that says it's working. So, we appreciate the questions that you ask, we want you to understand what our strategic purpose is. For example, this week, on behalf of the chamber and the FADF, the Fulton Area Development Foundation, which is a sister organization to the chamber, that is a 501(c)(3), I attended a discussion on community housing. You can't have workforce development if you don't have housing. And Mrs. Tyler was there with me, and I think it was a good conversation. And out of that came a commitment to do a community housing needs assessment. Mr. Stone and the CMCA Housing Committee are gonna work on that, and the chamber and the FADF will absolutely support it. We can't go get money to do projects if we don't have statistics that show the need and that show the opportunities. And so that housing needs assessment is a, is a great example of developing partners, right? And developing the narrative to go get what we need. Sorry, I rambled. Pardon me. Can you tell I'm a little bit passionate about this stuff?
I know this dollar amounts might be somewhat new to you as far as the chamber, but have you had time to look at the impact of this dollar amount to your strategic plan and...
So I mentioned that the chamber had been revitalized about seven years ago. Since that time, the chamber has been focused on a longer-term strategic plan in which we cultivate and develop more sources of revenue, more sources of support, more sources of funding. And so we've seen the percentages shift from those very early years, we were very reliant on city and county support. The membership has increased exponentially since those years. And so today, as it stands, I did some quick statistics for twenty-two, and as it stands year-to-date, twenty, twenty-seven percent of the revenue has come from membership, twenty-three percent from events and public participation, like the teacher appreciation breakfast, the golf tournament, the annual banquet, the town and country dinner, on and on and on. Twenty-three percent comes from municipalities, twenty percent comes from the FADF, and that is corporate donors and other grant funding, and then four percent miscellaneous. So we have a very nice piece of pie now, where before that wasn't the case. So, very diverse. But we're also doing a lot more work, we're doing more. We were fortunate enough, through good, how do I say it, it's good support, to get a workforce development grant, a small business development corporation grant, and a Missouri Technology Corporation grant. Those three things support additional positions that go start programs. So, we're focusing on workforce development. One of those grants was to support that position, and it's getting off the ground, starting to do some things.
There's one, yeah. Basically, so, and what, in the sense of the financing, the funding, those positions are all in workforce development and...
Small business counseling.
Like, she was kind of working on those small business, we're trying to seek other funding, so, we're trying to be really responsible with the quality of each of us, and also, you know, part of our job is to make money, and...
Right. We intend to do that. I also wanted to make a comment, there was some discussion at the, at the meeting Monday about the building and the cost of the building and that kind of thing. I just wanted to share with you that we, we did a quick, very quick little look, the chamber and the FADF have spent more than fifteen thousand dollars on that building in the last three years, repairs. Just to maybe refresh, those of you who weren't around at the time that the, that that building was allowed to be occupied by the Show Me Innovation Center, it was a mess, terrible, rabbit worn of little building, little rooms, little, and mold infested, it was awful.
I think it was in the bubble.
Anyway, we went in, the, the city supervising the reception and diagnostic work crew did demolition. We got electrical donated, we got drywall donated, we got plumbing donated, we got flooring donated, technology donated, connectivity donated, all of that. So the, the city didn't have to invest in that building to that degree. We did it, and we're maintaining it.
And I, and I didn't want to discount that, I was just throwing it out there, I don't love partnerships, and I thought, well, it'd be nice at some point to at least talk about, let's, what, see what it would look like to separate that, where you guys aren't beholden to us, we're not beholden to you, that type of thing.
I understand, I understand, and, and we do appreciate that idea, that thought, but I, it's good to have some facts in hand when you're thinking about things like that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'd just say I appreciate all that you guys do, and the fact that you're coming to us with the understanding that we all had to pull our bootstraps up, next year's gonna be tight for us all, and your willingness to come, come at us with...
So, as, as we were thinking about this the other day, because, Brad, your question's Is it gonna hurt the chamber? No, okay? No, because we're determined the work is gonna go on, no matter what. We're gonna find a way to get the work done, because that's what we should do.
I know it needs to be done in the community, and I'm, I'm just, I'm right here, just making sure that Terry does it, regardless of who's in the community, so, we were even like, we were, we were gonna do work for more of ourselves, especially, we're, we can't do it without you, right now, but, um, we're really, we're, so, I don't know.
Any success stories you just want to mention, as of maybe even this year, that, just so the council's aware of this?
There's, there's several.
Too many to list, or...
We'll have our quarterly update next, next council meeting, won't we?
I would honestly say look at those updates, look at those quarterly updates, they contain a lot of information. The opportunities we're getting, the RFIs and the RFPs are substantially increased from just a few number, a few small years ago. We have some retail presence that we didn't have before, we have some manufacturing activity that might be occurring.
Yeah, so...
Sneaky.
Of course, I like to talk.
So, and I, I want you all to know, you know, I really appreciate the support, and over the years, we have come a long way in the last seven years, and it's been baby steps. And, you know, Kim did mention we have some new restaurants that are coming in, and retail, like, you know, we have scooters that just opened up, and, and is that us that have went out and sought them? No, we, we help facilitate and make sure that they had all the right connections and partnerships, make sure that they were able to come here and talk with the city of Fulton, and have those, you know, and, and we are seeking and having those conversations when we attend recon, and we get those contacts, and we have a Kentucky Fried Chicken that is going up right now because of those conversations. And, you know, one of the things that I think that people don't understand, now Mary and Jeff do, because they have been there and had those conversations, Jeff, you were actually there during the Kentucky Fried Chicken conversation. At recon.
I was going to ask you later if, if that connected back to that meeting.
Yes, yes, and, and you know...
I met with them three times during that three-day...
Yeah.
...to get them here.
And, you know, that's, that's exciting, but, you know, our job is to sell the community and let people know where we're at and what we have available here, and help bring them, and then you all have a wonderful body of people here that perform great work, Dennis and these, these are out there, Kentucky Fried Chicken, working with them as they're building that, so, I mean, it, it's a joint effort, it's not just the chamber, it's a joint effort.
Thank you, Tammy.
So, so we have a strategic plan that contains six really important bullets, and every meeting, we start with those bullets, to keep us focused, this is what we're to be working on, and it's big things, it's not planning a social event, it's making the wheels of our community run. It's economic development, it's workforce development, it's housing, it's education, all those things.
Healthcare, healthcare.
All the above, healthcare, central to our, our purpose. So we do it all, we do it in partnership, we don't do it all alone, anything all alone, we do it together. But we're the hub, and we need to keep being there, we need to keep working.
Appreciate hearing about the housing, and there's just so many intangible things that, that the chamber does, and it's not just hammer it's her staff, it's the volunteers, when we go to an event, it's done professionally, and we have that support system that I know, I'm proud of our chamber, when I go to these places.
Can I just say, you know, they're gonna get tired of me, you're just gonna say stay away next time. Can I also say that we're being recognized, our method of working is being recognized at the state level. We get attention from other chambers of commerce, other state agencies, they look to us as a model of what to do and how to do it. I'm really proud of that. We didn't know that we were special, we were just doing what needed to be done, but we're standing out. So, we appreciate that partnership.
Yep. And that can translate into grant dollars, you know, when we're going after these things that, that we're competing against other cities, legislators, city Fulton pop up, so that makes a deal. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, item of discussion, I, while I don't have an answer of where the money would be found in the budget, I feel that the, the cut from seventy-eight thousand last year for twenty twenty-two to sixty thousand for twenty twenty-three is too big of a cut in this contract. I feel like we, it's a, it's almost a fourth, I mean, that's twenty-three percent that we're cutting out of this contract, and I doubt we're expecting a fourth less work from the chamber and, and from that organization. Again, I don't have an answer for how much we should be giving them, how much we can afford to give them, and where the money would come from, but I think going from seventy-eight to sixty is too big of a cut in one year.
And we talked about, you know, costs going up and belts getting tighter, well, I'm sure their costs are gonna go up, we do a lot of driving, a lot of gas expenses, a lot of expenses in everything they do, so, can't disagree with that, well, and everything they do is only gonna bring hopefully more revenue, more tax dollars to the city. If you look at the, I mean, I don't know what the cost is, and maybe Kathy or Renee or Ms. Tyler would know, the cost of an economic, economic developer position within this city, which basically they're doing for us via contract, so, not sure what that cost would be for a position on our own budget, as to fulfill the same goals that they provide for us.
Yeah, it'd be a, a big number, but, for sure, but, but regardless, you know, we, the administration has put that number in as a doable number for us next year, and, but it's up to you guys, if you want to up that number, Renee will find a number somewhere. Or we will have to...
I do not have the money.
I mean, yeah. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I was saying something, you know, we, we have cut this budget in so many ways, and there have been so many different questions from council with respect to salaries and other things. It is not an easy task, it's not an easy task. Our expenses just to maintain a city have gone up exponentially. I understand the commentary about hiring an economic development person, I know how much it would cost, I have a network of economic development people around the country that I've worked with in various capacities. So we do indeed appreciate what the chamber does. However, and I must say this, and I have no qualms about saying it publicly, it is paramount to the city of Fulton that the city of... paramount to the city of Fulton that the city of Fulton's employees and services, that we're able to function in the manner that each of you, as residents, as I am, have become accustomed to. While, you know, eighteen thousand dollars might seem like a severe cut, we've made even harsher cuts in other instances in trying to again, maintain and create an effective and easeless delivery of services. It's not, it's not hard, I mean, it's not easy. So to say, I'll find the money, I'm sorry, the tree is done. We do not, I really, it is, it is really done. And what I can come back and suggest is perhaps next year, our revenues will be better, and then we can revisit. We will continue to work with the chamber in giving them the discounts and offering any building, any services, golfing, whatever. Perhaps we can make an even more discounted price to help y'all with golf tournament using Legends or whatever. There are ways that we can perhaps help to, you know, offset this. But that, that are actually easier than finding the money. But I think that, that we can find ways to work with you guys that will offset a little of this.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler, for that last section of finding those, those non-cash ways of supporting.
Yeah, thanks for, for the, for the candor. You know, the, it's real. Money's tight and inflation hurt us all. And, and we've gotta find ways to make that back up, at least in the short term, and this is one way we're gonna do it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and if you look at this note written by one of our citizens, and I've just been able to scan it because we've been in the meeting, but points out we, you know, we still have a lot of issues that we have to deal with. I mean, you pointed out the last council meeting, we still have the nearly nine million dollar recplex that we had to pay for, we had to continue to service that debt, other debt that we have. You know, and we used to, we used to have deep pockets, and we, our pockets aren't deep anymore. We all got used to that, being able to do things, and it was, it was, it was great. And, you know, when I look at the budget, I don't see the capital projects I wanna see in it. And I know all of us wanna see in it and make, to move our city forward. So we, we had to tighten our belt right now, and hopefully things will turn around on us. We, you know, I hate, I don't like the thought of having to raise our rates on gas and electric and all this other such. You know, I just, I don't like it, okay? And, but I don't know, it's the reality of the situation we're in, in the market we're in right now with utilities, with the inflation, gasoline prices. Although, you're welcome, I bought gas for Sunday night, so then it went down the next day. That's how it works. But anyway, just kidding. But, I mean, it's, it's not coming down fast enough. And, and that increases the cost of all our services, if we can even, and products that we, we get shipped in, if we can even get them. You know, and we're still dealing with, with that. So although I'd like to continue on, but you know, I, I also wanna make a statement that the city, you know, we, we work with the building, we, we contribute, the county contributes, the citizens of Fulton are also citizens of the county, so they're double dipping to a bit. I mean, not really, but I mean, it's, we're paying twice for some, for some things. And it's the same thing when we talk about the services we get from the county for just, for dispatching services and stuff. We're, we're, all of our citizens of Fulton are also citizens of the county. So we have to keep that in mind, too. You know, so I just, just wanna point out some of that thing.
Yeah, and also, it's to be noted that, that they've said that sixty is fine. So, I mean, if they're good with it, we should be good with it, in my opinion. We can do better next year, maybe we can.
Right. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no.
No.
Six, six yeses and one no, is that what you have? Madam Clerk? All right, so that will pass. Next up, Councilman Combs isn't here. Brad, would you mind presenting? Oh, we, we'll, we'll break. Yeah, 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 we gotta take a five-minute break, guys. Sorry. We'll, we'll be right back.
My concern is I have to get it cleared from my insurance company. And I would want to know.
Okay, thank you all for that little break. And we'll, we'll get back to the, to the drawing board here. For ordinances, second reads, Councilman Combs is not here, but Councilman Luther is gracious enough to present Bill 1657.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1657, an ordinance incorporating certain territory as requested by Calaway County Presiding Commissioner Gary Youngerman into the corporate limits of the city of Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that this be tabled indefinitely due to the, we can discuss that further.
Second. We have a motion in a second, and we'll just have to bring this back in the right, with the right description.
Yeah, and I put a little note in here, essentially, and Dennis can probably come up and speak to this if we need him to, but essentially, Presiding Commissioner Youngerman indicated that after the survey of the property, the legal description changed. And since we had a public hearing, and we have to bring it in by ordinance, we have to make sure that all of that is consistent throughout. So, the recommendation would be to go ahead and table this indefinitely, which would render it dead. And then, I think our anticipation is at the next meeting, or at the first meeting in January, once we have everything ready to go. You'll be seeing essentially the same thing, but it will be with the correct legal description.
Wouldn't it be better to just vote it down?
Truly, it's up to you. When we kind of talked about this initially, we didn't want anyone to think that someone wasn't in support of incorporating this. It's essentially just to table it indefinitely, which does the same thing without the negative connotation.
I mean, we table it, basically, if we don't take it up off the table next meeting, it dies.
So actually, a table indefinitely, it's dead. If you were simply to table something, it would go automatically to the next agenda. By tabling it indefinitely, it is automatically dead. I promise.
I don't remember that from the train, but okay.
I'll get you trained, I promise.
I don't remember that part being covered, but.
We appreciate that clarification, and yeah, I think the timing is not an issue for this, so we'll get it done when we get it done. And any other discussion on it, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And moving on, Councilman Stone, if you would present 1658.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1658, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the state of Missouri to perform work on city right-of-way at the intersection of Route C and Tennessean Road in Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to said agreement and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to approve, to move bill number 1658 to third and final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second. We have a motion in a second. We did talk about this at our last meeting, a little bit of sidewalk work, I believe. Discussion on it, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And if you would, again, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1658, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the state of Missouri to perform work on city right-of-way at the intersection of Route C and Tennessean Road in Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to said agreement and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to move bill number 1658 for final reading at tonight's meeting.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, if you would call roll for our final vote.
Mr. Luther.
Yes.
Ms. Nelson.
Yes.
Ms. Rufford.
Yes.
Ms. Saibert.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Combs of Deppson. That's seven affirmative.
Very good, and next up, bill number 1659, Councilwoman Nelson, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1659, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 1119-05, establishing gas rates of the city of Fulton, Missouri, enacting a new ordinance establishing gas rates in lieu thereof, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we place bill number 1659 for third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and again, we did talk about this at our last meeting. We did an update from Darryl, and the U-Board on this. Is there any more discussion on this? And then I'll call for that question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And if you would.
Bill number 1659, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 1119-05, establishing gas rates of the city of Fulton, Missouri, enacting a new ordinance establishing gas rates in lieu thereof, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we pass bill number 1659 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. All heard the bill read three times, at this time, Madam Clerk, do you take full call?
Ms. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Rufford, yes.
Ms. Saibert.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Combs of Deppson. Mr. Luther.
Yes.
Seven affirmative, one negative.
Very good, and our final ordinance tonight, our second reading of our budget. If you would present this, Councilman Wise, please.
Bill number 1660, ordinance number 1, an ordinance adopting an official budget and capital improvement program and appropriating the funds of the city for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023. I make a motion to place bill number 1660 for third reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very good, we have a motion in a second. We were provided, updated, and it looks like pretty much the final version of our budget now, that we should all have in front of us. And we were able to get a bunch of questions answered, I know, this last week. And there may be more questions that need to be answered. If that's the case, follow me, the folks are here that can answer those questions.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a request. I'd like to either add a budget line item for $5,000 for, to assist in funding the housing assessment survey that we learned about this week, either under general funds or as part of our reserve that we have back for council discretion. To elaborate, many of us attended a presentation on a community housing assessment survey. This is something that is done in most communities. The last one that we've had here was, I believe, greater than 25 years ago. I believe this is the last time a true housing assessment was done, either in Fulton or Calaway County. The results of that assessment demonstrate the housing inventory that we have, the value of those houses, and then it also looks at all of the economic factors around those neighborhoods, including workforce, whether they migrate in or migrate out, then their median income. And it really, I can't even explain it in just a few minutes, the level of data and the detail that we get from a community housing needs assessment survey, and then all of the opportunities that that data will provide. Many of the things that Ms. Barnes mentioned earlier, as well as all the other grant opportunities, both from the city, other nonprofits, the Housing Authority, SERV, everybody in our community would benefit from this data. It does have a price tag for the county of between $55,000 and $60,000 for six-month engagement in that contract. And then, but the level of data that comes back from that will be, will benefit from it for years. And the line item that I'm asking for is for the city of Fulton to contribute $5,000 in funding during calendar year 2023 for that needs assessment. I'd like to put Ms. Barnes on the spot, if she could stand up and share. While we were in the meeting, there were some brainstorming done about, you know, where we could find the various funding sources and who all would contribute. Again, you know, the $5,000 would kind of be our, the city of Fulton's percentage, and then we've got the county, we've got many businesses, and then just, if you could share some of the brainstorming, the, from the FADF.
Sure. Um, we, this was, the conversation was spearheaded by the CMCA, but with a bunch of community partners there. And so, representing the chamber in the FADF, it seemed appropriate that those organizations step forward and lead some fundraising to help get money for the assessment. So the FADF will take the lead on that. I'm looking at these guys, because I haven't told them yet, but.
Welcome to the conference.
We'll take the lead on getting the FADF to act as a liaison for other community members to also support the initiative, so private industry, business, et cetera. The FADF will do some outreach, and hopefully, we also had another brainstorming that kind of happened at the, as the meeting broke up, and we were looking for a different provider with a different price tag. So that was the bid we had in hand, and we think by using other known resources, we can get a little bit, we can get to the same result with a little, maybe better price tag. But, and that $60,000 price tag was going to be pretty steep, but the FADF is going to step forward and help with that initiative.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. I wanted her to share those pieces to just, again, demonstrate the partnerships and the brainstorming that is being done by all the different community members and the different representatives in the room, so that it didn't feel like that this was going to lay on the shoulders. CMCA has a grant, they're going to contribute $10,000 of that grant specifically to this survey. So that's, you know, that's one significant funding source. If the city could be a small funding source, and then we can partner with the rest of the different opportunities throughout the county and the city. But that's my request, is to either earmark the $5,000 from council discretion or to actually add a line item of $5,000 to the general fund.
So what we can do is reduce the special projects, which might be what you're referring to as council discretion. It is a count number 015223550, that is currently designated as $20,000. It's the fund that you all use for MML and other things. We can reduce that by $5,000 and code it for the housing assessment.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
I really think that probably the most appropriate thing would be to go ahead and have, I know you said your request is to do that, probably to go ahead and have a motion second, and have you guys vote on that since it is a change to the draft you were given.
Is it truly a change if that's the fund we're going to use? Or is it just that we're publicly saying we're going to earmark part of those funds?
It's essentially just publicly agreeing to earmark those funds. So that's where I think a motion would probably be most appropriate.
I make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. I would just add myself that our housing needs are crucial right now. City Fulton, as a lot of cities are. That directly relates to workforce, and that's also our biggest challenge. So, I mean, to help make that study a little bit more robust, or to help support that, I think is very appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? I'll call for that question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
So that's again, six and one. We had enough down here.
Do you want me to yell at you? Six affirmative.
Where all those voices are from. Very good, thank you all. And other questions or comments on our budget as presented?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Couple things, a couple places in here, it's like on the inside cover, and I saw it somewhere else. The city prosecuting attorney, the actual charter title of that position is city attorney. So we need to get that straightened in our, in our thing. I also want to look at, I'm looking at page nine, which shows city of Fulton population estimates. And essentially, from 2004, maybe 2005, 2006, it kind of went up. But we've been flatlining on our population. And I think that's an indicator of a lot of things we've been talking about tonight, about our housing needs, homeless. I mean, I'm not sure how they got some of the numbers, when you look down here, the details, it's kind of interesting, but, what the actual numbers are, but we've been flatlining for a long time. So if we want to grow, we're going to have to figure out a way to get the housing available, and get people to want to move to Fulton. I think any retail we can get is definitely a step in the right direction. Employment opportunities are definitely there. So a lot of the things that we've been talking about tonight, I just, I guess I never really paid attention to this chart before, and I never noticed it before, but it's, it's, I've kind of had that concern for a long time, but this is showing it to me in black and white, that I was, that what I was thinking was true, that we would have been just flatlining. So.
A lot of things make a city more attractive to want to live at. We do have a lot going for us, but there's some challenges as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a great place to live, and bring up your family, that's, I mean, that's what I did. So I chose to live here, I wasn't born here. So, and, so there's other people in the same boat, but we just got to figure out what we're going to do with our money, and that's a big problem.
Also, on page one, I believe these dates are incorrect, for the terms expired. Valerie should be 2024, correct? And Bob should be 2024, correct?
Yeah.
So those are, those are also incorrect, and, and, is it Brad, Bob, Valerie, and, is that everybody? No, Mary, isn't it?
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah. Every word that it says 2022 should be 2024.
Yeah. Good catch.
Okay, well, as we, as we move forward the next week or two, there's still time to dig into this, and we do expect to hear more questions, and we can definitely provide answers.
Well, the other thing is, when are we going to have the public hearing on this? Aren't we required to have a hearing, or are we going to have that at the December meeting?
I believe the city clerk input that notice today to the newspaper, and that'll happen on December 13th.
Okay. And I'm, I think we still need to sit down in an informal setting, maybe, you know, it still could be a work session or whatever, and still talk about this more. I mean, I think there's still some questions out there, I'm seeing them and hearing them. So I would like to propose that we get together sometime between now and the 13th to sit down and discuss this more.
With that being said, that's why I want to make a motion to move this to the third reading, if appropriate, or maybe tabling it should be more appropriate. I know we've got a lot of questions out there. We haven't found the best avenue to discuss all these questions on the budget. To Councilman West's concern, it's maybe a long work session. I got tons of questions. I'm trying to transfer my notes from the budget last time to the new budget this time, to make sure nothing's changed there. And a lot of my questions may be minor in nature, but I know we've had minor discussions on email, but you know, that's not the best route, the work session is, so that's where I believe tabling the budget itself would be the most appropriate.
The fear is, if we table it, and we have a weather event, we would miss, you know, one of those meetings that might put us under the, under the.
We're already there, we're already in time pressure, that's, I mean, I felt concerned about this all along.
We can do a work session without having to read the, read the ordinance again.
Yeah.
If we schedule that, try to get that in.
Right, if you did a work session, you would not be reading the ordinance, there would be no official, it would be discussion, open discussion.
Yeah.
It would not be reading the ordinance and going through the formality of the third reading.
Just go through and ask questions, so we can get our answers, and.
We've mentioned time pressure, but what is the time pressure?
31st of the year, the last day.
We won't have a budget, the first.
What happens if we don't have a budget?
Yeah.
To your point, we're, we're all trying to get through this thing, it's, you know, a lot coming at us all at once, and, but what we don't want to do is rush through something, miss some major issues in this budget, and not support constituents. It takes a couple extra meetings, if it goes into next year, it goes into next year. Just want to make sure we all get it right.
Right.
Go it to the people.
It'd be a first I've ever experienced.
Maybe we don't want to, we can have more meetings, but mayor, mayor's concerned, if we, whether happens, there is that risk.
I appreciate that, Councilman, and maybe what we can do is, is do all of the above. Let's, let's schedule another work session between now and the 13th. We can have lots of discussion. If we get to the 13th, and we choose not to move this item onto final reading, then we can do that, then we, then we'll still have the opportunity for more meetings after that.
I'm pretty much available all next week. Well, Tuesday night I have something, but that's it.
I'd be concerned about officially tabling it at this meeting, when we could table it at the next one, if we needed to.
Yeah, let's try to have a positive attitude.
I, I agree, I think that there are a lot of questions, and there's a lot of information that we're just receiving. I know information that I've requested we received tonight. And I am, I want to see the budget passed as well, but, but how it looks right now, I cannot pass it. So there's just too many questions I have, and.
And that, that's every year, you know, we always get to this time, and, you know. Everybody has questions, and it's.
And I think that if we are willing to do a work session, and everybody is able to come to that, I think that that's important, with the knowing that if we need to table it next time, that that's an option.
Yeah, I think that's, follow me, it's always an option, I mean, we're at the will of you guys, so.
How's everybody scheduled for the 30th, look? I think it's, I mean.
The, December?
November 30th.
November 30th, yeah. Next Wednesday, week from, week to tomorrow. I'm just throwing a date, a day out there.
Oh no, Tuesdays, Tuesdays seem to work best for everyone.
Oh, Bob, I'm sorry. Yeah. I had to miss something, but it's not a big deal.
So now are we thinking the 29th?
Yeah, because Bob has something on Wednesday night, sorry, Bob.
Who cannot make the 29th? Did someone say they cannot make the 29th?
I have something that night, but it's a, it's a webinar, it's not a big deal, I can miss it.
Okay. Let's, let's try to do the 29th, is that, is that cool with everybody? We'll spend another couple hours on this.
6:00?
Start earlier.
5:30 worked okay. And I'll tell you what I will do, I will make sure we have sub sandwiches, or pizza, or something, to everybody, because we have staff that won't have time to get home for, to eat supper.
Right.
So we'll make sure that, that we feed, feed ourselves.
Can the staff make it?
Lauren won't have to bring hoshi for us.
I'm willing, I'm willing.
I know you are, that was very nice of you, so, but we can, we can do that.
How's that look, how does that work for the staff?
I may be a few minutes late for that, but that's fine.
I'm not hearing those.
I, I appreciate that.
We serve at your pleasure, so.
It's a busy time of year, and I understand that.
We're here. Some kind of nod would be nice, so. Yeah, that'll work, we'll plan on that then, and between now and then, if there are questions that you have that we can clear up, follow me and send those as soon as possible, and, you know. We don't know if we don't know, so ask.
That's right, ask.
And that's what it's all about.
Thank you.
We still have to call for the other question.
Yeah, we're still right in the middle of this.
On moving it to third reading.
So yeah, unless there's other questions tonight, I will call for the question, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Five and two.
Thank you.
And we'll move that along, we are just moving it down the road, it's not approving it, and.
You're telling me who's second in that review?
Councilman Stone.
Mr. Stone, seconded, I think.
Yes.
All right, very good, we do have announcements. Kathy Holslag, of course, will retire from the Finance Department on December 2nd, after 17 years, 11 months. We'll miss her. Mike Alderman also will retire, and he's, with our Buildings and Grounds Department here in City Hall, we'll miss him, he's going to retire on December 9th, after eight years of service.
I'd like to invite Mike into chambers, just for a moment, that the council can recognize all the service that he's given us over the years during his meeting.
Absolutely, I think he probably would appreciate that.
I gave him my.
Yes, if we could, Mike, thank you for, for your years of service, we'll miss you.
And you can join us to celebrate his next chapter on December 8th. He will be having a lunch at Legends.
And we, we get lots of the council at those events, and that means the world to those folks, if you can make it.
Are we going to thoroughly embarrass Kathy with a similar event?
Kathy said no. But we are, our senior leadership is taking her out to dinner. Unlike lunch, we can have drinks.
Before the mayor, I do have a quick update. Thanksgiving dinner for first responders is going to be at 12 noon at the 911 Center, which is 1201 Route O. And so I know some of you all were interested in donating pies and such. If you don't want to drop them off, if they're not ready, if they're ready tomorrow, you want to drop them off tomorrow, I'll get them there. Otherwise, you can drop them off over to the 911 Center. So starting at noon, and if anyone would like to help out as far as serving the guys, you're welcome to join us, because my cousin and I are going to come out and serve a little bit, and, yeah.
Very good, that's wonderful, appreciate that.
How many people are we expecting to serve?
Twenty-five.
Ms. Kitty, oh, how many people?
Yes.
So they're going to be coming, we're just going to lay it out, and they can come through. So about 20, 25 folks. We're including the gentlemen that run the power plant, because that's 24/7, and they're always working on the holidays. So along with the county, the city, police, fire, and the 911 operators, so. And Mr. Mosher's agreed, they actually are preparing Thanksgiving dinner at Mosher's on Thursday, which I thought was pretty awesome.
Yes.
It will be hot.
And I think it's a great thing, it's a good token of appreciation to those folks that can't be with their families every day. Small thing, but.
Is there an opportunity to include the ambulance district? The crews are all.
Isn't the ambulance district under the county?
No, it's not.
It's not?
It's a separate entity.
Oh.
I can talk to you after.
And you, it, well, yeah, we can talk about it, because the orders are already in place.
Understand.
So is this just for the workers or family going to come in?
It's the workers.
Okay, because we talked about family.
All right, well, while, while we're finishing that, I will finish out those announcements. We have the final city council meeting of 2022 will be held Tuesday, December 13th at 6:30 PM. Candidate packets for the offices of mayor, first through fourth ward council members, and city attorney are available in the city clerk's office beginning October 24th, and thereafter, Monday through Friday, 8 to 12 noon and 1 to 5 PM. Candidate filing opens on December 6th at 8 AM and closes December 27th at 5 PM. For additional information, contact the city clerk's office at 573-592-3111. And we're happy to have a resident expert when it comes to elections with us now. And then City Hall and the Solid Waste Department will be closed on the following dates in observance of the upcoming holidays, November 24th and 25th, December 23rd and 26th, and January 2nd.
I saw the post that the city made about trash, which I really, really appreciate.
I was going to, you beat me to it, Lauren, thank you very much. That was a suggestion that we made last year, and I greatly appreciate the city allowing recycling to be picked up, residential recycling every week between now and the new year.
Yep, our staff is doing a great job, Michael's doing wonderful, and we appreciate him being on top of that, so, all right, very good. I do not have a need for executive session tonight, and all those in favor, leave, say a no. Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry.
What was that?
The mayor did it.
I make a motion, we adjourn? Were y'all going to do a fire meet? I'm not mad anyway.
We'll make you run for reelection.